We're lost.
No way.
I don't care.
Just the chair's hard.
Please, thank you.
If some people listen to us, finally. Trying to figure out.
These guys are gendered.
They're not going to be just patriots.
That's it.
They got their two wins.
I said my money.
Two years for your taxes.
Get the closing.
Hey, good morning to this 10 a.m. We ask you to please rise if you're able for the Pledge of Allegiance. Before we convene the Commissioners' Public Meeting. Apparently, Father, we celebrate the day of life in the beautiful area that we call home. Majestic mountains vibrant their colors. Beautiful forest full of wildlife. Our walking trails in the stunning scenery. We thank you that you're perfectly faithful. You stand on your promises and never fail us. Instruct us, bring everything to you in prayer. So many times our prayers are filled with what we want instead of what we have and be thankful for what we have. Let's be eternally grateful for the blessings you have bestowed upon us. As we near another Thanksgiving season. Remind us to give thanks to you. And we ask for your guidance, wisdom, director of paths. May our conversations be respectful. With an opening here to listen with patience to each other. Grant us the grace to see and understand different points of view. And we do this in a sense of unity and love. Let us try to reflect your will as we move forward. These things we always ask in your name on this day. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Senate. To the Republic of the United States. One nation under God, indivisible, infinite, just as all.
Morning, everyone. At this time, we convene the Commissioners' Public Meeting. And ask for approval of the recent agreements. Will you make the motion? I'll say. All fair side.
Aye.
Do we have any public comment on the general item? Be online?
Nothing online.
Okay, moving on to Nikki. Woods.
Good morning.
Morning.
Presented for your ratification are invoices due through November nineteenth, twenty twenty five, to be paid on November twelfth, twenty twenty five, in the amount of six hundred fifty six thousand ninety three dollars and ninety cents. Sixty nine point three seven out of the general fund, eighteen point oh two out of the ARPA funds, one point one seven out of act thirteen, eleven point zero six percent out of RMS, and point three eight out of escrow.
Thank you. We have a motion to sub the accounts payable. I'll make the motion. I'll say. Questions or comments for Nikki? All fair side? Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. National highlights. Bye.
Good morning.
Morning.
The first time I have for you is to acknowledge the county will be accepting bids for janitorial services. This is for the employees, health and wellness center. And then my next items to acknowledge the county will be requesting bids for correctional operators to sort it up once with the president.
Okay, thank you. This time we recess Commissioners' Public Meeting for salary board. Need salary board this time.
First item I have is to vote to approve the salary board minutes from the October sixteenth, twenty twenty five meeting.
Yeah, motion. I'll make the motion. I'll say. All fair side?
Aye. And then, um, in the Department of Public Safety, reclassify the Director of Public Safety from a pay grade fourteen to a pay grade thirteen.
Okay. And that position is now posted. For anyone who wants to apply. And motion to accept. I'll make the motion. I'll say. All fair side?
Aye. And then in Facilities Management, reclassify two maintenance, two positions to maintenance, one positions.
Motion to accept. I'll make the motion. I'll say. And I'll also mention that that's also a change in pay grade is from seven to six. And thank you. All fair side?
Aye.
Aye.
Then we have a TBA cleanup, um, part one, I believe. So I'll, do you want to do them by department?
Uh, yeah, we can do that.
Okay. In planning and community development, remove two transportation planner positions, pay grade nine from the TDA.
Yeah, motion to accept. I'll make the motion. I'll say. Any questions or comments? All fair side?
Aye.
Aye.
In the Puri Release Center, remove work crew foreman supervisor position, pay grade eight from the TDA.
Motion to accept. I'll make the motion. I'll say. Questions or comments? All fair side?
Aye. At the Department of Public Safety, remove the Communications Trainer Coordinator Position, Pay Grade Nine from the TDA, and remove the Senior Public Safety GIS Program Manager Position, Pay Grade Ten from the TDA.
And motion to accept. I'll make the motion. How's that? All fair side?
Aye.
Aye.
At RMS.
One second, any questions or comments? All fair side?
Aye.
Thank you.
At RMS, remove Chief Training and Risk Management Position, Pay Grade Ten from the TDA. Remove Courier Parts Runner Position, Pay Grade One from the TDA, and that is part time. Uh, remove Director of RMS Position, Pay Grade Thirteen from the TDA. Remove Four Equipment Operator Positions, Pay Grade Six and Pay Grade Five from the TDA. Remove the Operations Supervisor Position, Pay Grade Eight from the TDA. Remove Professionals Engineer Position, Pay Grade Thirteen from the TDA. Remove Transfer Station Supervisor Position, Pay Grade Seven from the TDA. Remove Truck Driver Transfer Station Position, Pay Grade Six from the TDA. Remove Material Recovery Coordinator Position, Pay Grade Nine from the TDA. That is effective per resignation of the employee that's in that position. And remove Work Crew Foreman Recycling Position, Pay Grade Six from the TDA.
Um, motion to accept. I'll make the motion. I'll say. Any questions or comments?
Uh, the only comment I'll make is, I mean, when you look at RMS, it seems like a lot. There's a lot of positions that have been empty for a long time that are not necessary at that facility. Uh, and it's in line with trying to create a profit in our recycling and landfill operation. The one that might scare people if they hear it is the Director Position. The reason for that is that Gary Steyer, who was over there as the Operational's Manager, is doing a very good job for us as an Operational's Manager. And with our new Director here at the County, Shannon Barnes, she will, she basically has, uh, absorbed the responsibilities of the Director of the RMS Position. So the position isn't going away per se, it's just being filled with different.
Positions have all been open with the exception of one. Where sometime, so. Uh, as we were to remove these eighteen positions off the TDA. Uh, salary board will also be looking at thirty five more next week to take off the TDA. Uh, on the TDA, the county has roughly, I believe, about five hundred fifty full-time employees. Um. And I spoke to someone who used to be in county government this past Saturday, and he said twenty years ago, the county was at three seventy five. So you can see how county government has grown over the last twenty years. And a lot of these positions are sitting open or truly not necessary. Uh, we've talked to different department heads, elected officials. They say they can, they can do more with less. Um, by eliminating some of the positions, uh, in some of those conversations we've had. Going into twenty twenty six, it would say to those elected officials and department heads, if you absolutely need a position that's been eliminated, bring it to the salary board. And bring your documentation and we'll take a look at it. Not saying that these are gone forever, but at the same time, we have to give off the TDA and reduce, uh, reduce some of, uh, what's been on there for a long time. So. That said, anything further?
Now, yeah, just to make sure, there's no one in these positions. These are just sitting out, except the one with effective per resignation, which has come. But, yeah, this is, it is truly, really. It's not, no one just found out, oh, my gosh, that was my position. There's, there's no one in these positions. Some of them, as Scott has said, it's been a long, long time these positions have set up, so.
You said they pay insurances on those.
Yeah, right, there are costs, even though there's nobody in them, there are costs that go with it, so. Um, yeah, this is just, this is just a claim.
Yeah, all the favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Okay, thank you. At this time, we'll adjourn the salary board and reconvene the Commissioners' Public Meeting. And then we'll recess Commissioners' Public Meeting for the Board of Assessments and Revisions. Pretty broken.
Um, the first one, we'll start with the approval or denial of the following real estate refunds. The first one I have is for Michael and Linda Tate. The building was sketched incorrectly for years. Um, so the square footage of the building was incorrect, and the reason why they discovered this is because they'd listed the property for five hundred and fifty thousand. Um, so the refund amount is two thousand three hundred seventy dollars and three cents.
And.
Do you want to vote on that one?
Is that over, over time that created that level, that dollar amount?
Should do itself.
Each one? Yeah, I'll make the motion.
I'll say. All fair. Aye. Aye. Aye, thank you.
This, the second refund is for Larry Bodeman. The house was destroyed by fire on October fourth, twenty twenty five. The refund amount is a hundred and one dollars and twenty nine cents.
How much?
A hundred and one dollars and twenty nine cents.
Right, thank you. Um, motion to accept. I'll make the motion. I'll say. All fair side? Aye. Sorry to hear that, that is a pre-却是 unfortunate.
The next item is approve the real estate exemptions that are attached to the agenda. These are from April to today. So these are revisions of tax bills or voiding of tax bills.
Answer motion.
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
I'll say. Any questions or comments? Fair and gentle, fair side. Aye. Aye.
And the next item I have is I'm seeking your approval to certify the tax rolls for twenty twenty six. There are fifty two thousand forty four taxable parcels with an assessment of five billion, eight million, five, six, thirty eight, two fifty four. There is twenty one thirty one exempt parcels with an assessment of one billion sixty six, seven forty eight, seven ten. For our total parcels, fifty four thousand, two fourteen, with a total assessment of six billion, eight hundred million, seventy two thousand, three eighty six, nine sixty four. Any questions?
Brooke, do we have a breakdown of, of the exempt parcels? How many of those are nonprofits?
There is, I could do a spreadsheet, but you stop and think, there's the colleges, there's the hospitals.
Right.
Um, you've got townships, you've got school districts, but there's none that really designate as nonprofit, they're exempt, they're coded as exempt.
Yeah.
But as you know, the colleges and the hospitals are the biggest ones that come off the tax rolls due to the exemptions.
Right. I'd like to see a breakdown of the two.
Excuse me?
I'd like to see a breakdown of the two, if possible.
Okay.
Thank you. Motion to accept.
I mean, that's, that is the challenge, as Scott's kind of thinking out loud here, we've heard they're, they're the true nonprofits, and then they're, the, the companies that make millions and millions of dollars to avoid paying taxes, so that's, um, that's one of the things that the government is looking at, um, you know, not just local governments, but well, mostly local governments. So, um, where are we at? Are you looking for a motion?
Yeah, I just added that, we have, when you say we have two nonprofits, we have nonprofits that are making millions of dollars. Right. And we had to take a look at that and have discussion with those, those entities about what they can bring to the county. Brooke, I don't know if you know this from an educational standpoint, not only for us, but for the public. Are those decisions, when you look at, you know, I'll just pick on the hospital, that makes millions of dollars and they don't pay, they're exempt of taxes, is that a state decision or is that, does that come down to?
It's a state decision, but for an example, if they have a vacant lot, it's going to be taxable. They have to be using it for that purpose that they are applying for. So if they purchase a property that has a house on it, it's still going to be taxable. And that's no different from the township, if township purchases a parcel that has a house on it, they have to use it for township purposes. If they're going to rent it out, it's going to be taxable. And it's like Misane lodges that you guys denied last year, that's still in court, there's been no decision made on those two either.
So what about, and I get the hospitals because of the community service aspect, what about the colleges? Who makes that decision? Is that?
We still make the decisions.
That's our.
It still comes to you guys as the Board of Assessment.
Okay. It's statutory driven relative to what qualifications they have to meet for the exemption. And that's determined at a local level based on the applications that are put in by the nonprofits or the educational institutions at the time. Um, they're reviewed and then that determination's made, but it's statutorily and case law driven. Um, who qualifies under what conditions that they're using the property? So like Brooke mentioned, there, there is a number of instances where municipalities and college educational institutions and the hospitals, nonprofits are paying taxes on their real estate because they're not using them for those designated statutory purposes.
And that's what Little League is too, some of their parcels are exempt, some are taxable, so Little League is just the same way too.
Yeah.
But ultimately, the decision lies within the state government, not the county government. I mean, we have the final, we're the decision, but following the state's regulations.
Yeah, you have, you have a set of regulations, you have to follow them, and when saying yes or no, it's when they apply for the. Right. And, and I think Brooke and her people do a good job of, of reviewing those and making sure that, that those are being presented in the right way to actually sort of assess.
I'd like to see the breakdown of how many we are, so we see what percentage of nonprofits and true nonprofits are in that.
I have spreadsheets for, like coming college, Penn College and the hospital and all that, I have spreadsheets, plus Little League and everything.
It's a good time to discuss, a budget time, so people can understand the impact it has on the community and our budget overall.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. Are we doing, vote, do we motion? We have a move.
Yeah, I don't think you.
You didn't vote.
Not motion at all.
If not motion, all right, I'll make the motion. I'll say. On fair side? Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brooke. Thank you. This time, we'll adjourn the Board of Assessments for the Communities and the Commissioners' Public Meeting.
Morning again.
Morning, partner.
Uh, first time I have for you is vote to, um, award the bid for the yeast corn planter, two mics, and they have a sixty seven thousand, two hundred and five dollars. So this is unique in the sense that they're using the profit that the farm advisory team has created, um, by taking over the farm and doing their due diligence, and they're using the profit to buy this, um, corn planter in hopes of having a more successful season next year as well.
Okay, so the farm committee came back to us after the, uh, um, meeting and said, listen, we put the homework in. Um, uh, this was the best deal we could find, it'd be much more expensive, if we, uh, went out next year looking for another one. Um, we have a profit from what we've done so far, we utilize those bunnies to purchase this. So that's why we're here today.
Yeah, it's because if we waited till next year, it'd be a hundred and twenty thousand dollars estimated to repurchase, yeah.
Yeah. Significant, um, so we thank the farm committee for, again, working and, and helping reduce costs.
Yeah, they've been great to work with, and they're, uh, they're eager and willing to turn it around and make revenues, so it's been good.
Farmers know how to.
Get it done.
Get it done, and they know how to get the most out of a dollar.
Yeah. Yeah, good crew we have.
Yeah. Thank you. I don't, motion to accept. I'll make the motion. I'll say. All fair side? Aye.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Forty first, you've had an interesting week.
Well, you know, every, every year's an election year. Uh.
And then the off year.
Yeah, and I've never had so many people interested in my mail before either. Uh, a lot, a lot of calls yesterday, you know, and, and one of the questions that kept, kept coming up was, well, uh, you know, do you, how often do these tie votes come up? And the answer is they come up pretty often, not usually for city council, but you have it for other stuff, every, almost every local election year, you have tie votes for things further down ballot, like a constable auditor, tax collector, so you, you know, when you run local elections, you throw enough numbers around and eventually some of them are going to match up and you have to have some way to resolve it. We, we've had this going all the way back, I, I, you know, I was thinking back on this and, you know, how we had the eighteen seventy six presidential election, but even before that, it was the eighteen hundred one with Jefferson and Adams, and it wasn't actually Jefferson and Adams that tied. It was Jefferson tying with his own running mate in the Electoral College, because back then, the electors cast two votes instead of one. The idea being that the top person would become president, the next one would be vice president, so the electors had to come up with this little scheme where like, somebody would vote for a third party so that the top guy would become president, the next one would become vice president, and instead, Adams or Jefferson ties with his own running mate, and they had to resolve that in the House of Representatives. So, you know, these, this craziness has been going on forever, we're just the latest, you know, the latest chapter in it.
So little segment on District Chamber, huh?
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's fast, and then, of course, they fixed it later because they realized that this is going to be a problem if they keep doing it this way.
It went multiple votes, did, did they have to?
It went into February, uh, before they.
Like they didn't resolve it, it was almost like picking a poem, like they, they voted and they voted and they voted.
Yeah, and I should say, February back, back then, it, it, it wasn't like they went past inauguration because inauguration wasn't until March, you know, back then, you know, but, but still, they were, they were knocking on the door, you know, they went through a lot of rounds to get, to get that figured out, and that actually then fed into the duel between Burr and Hamilton too, so it's, you know, it's fascinating stuff. But anyway, I have a completely unrelated item for you today. It, it, and it's our agreement with Woodward Township Volunteer Fire Company, this is to do, uh, accessibility work at the fire hall. Uh, this is just them agreeing to what we proposed, so Tony Bisco and I were out there a couple of weeks ago, uh, before the election, which feels like a million years ago now, and, uh, and just explain to them what we wanted to do, some repainting of their, of their parking spaces, because the slopes are actually pretty good, uh, and they, you know, were indicated agreement with that, and we have, have, uh, the agreement here today for your approval as well.
Okay. So Forrest, we're gonna, we're gonna give you a gift, we're gonna vote on this, and I can guarantee we will end it with a tie.
Oh, good. Okay. Yeah, that's, that's true, I guess that can't happen, yeah.
All right, so is there a motion to accept this? Yeah, I'll make the motion. I'll say. Okay, all fair side? Aye.
All right, thank you.
Because there's no doubt.
Not this time. I understand.
Yeah, some of them stayed over there.
Good morning.
Morning, Stacy.
Good morning. Uh, we would like to request approval for the amendment to the agreement with Donald Friswell, Karen Friswell, Cynthia Nighouse, Deborah Carpenter, James Carpenter, and Melanie Webb. Um, and this is an extension of the English Tower Site Agreement, um, through December thirty first of forty five, uh, at the same rate of one thousand dollars annually, uh, in delivery of two tri, tri axles of QESA-based antelopes.
Hey, thank you. Uh, is there a motion? She said through.
Uh, through twenty forty five, so in addition, yes.
Those are twenty, twenty years. Uh, I've never voted on anything that far ahead of you. Yeah, I'll make the motion. I'll say. Uh, all fair side? Uh, aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Morning, Lee. Morning, Commissioners. Seeking your approval for the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six Pennsylvania Housing Affordability and Rehabilitation Enhancement Grant, application to the Pennsylvania Housing Finance Agency in the amount of four hundred twenty thousand, hundred thousand dollars. This is for the upcoming fair round that we're having an application for, um, submitted next week.
The motion to accept. I'll make the motion. I'll say. On fair side? Aye.
Six point five. Seeking your approval to ratify Pennsylvania Housing Affordability and Rehabilitation Enhancement Conditioning Grant Agreement with Pennsylvania Housing Finance Agency in the amount of nine hundred thousand, twenty five, hundred thousand.
The motion to accept. I'll make the motion. I'll say. All fair side? Aye. 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 Thank you, Molly.
Thank you.
Morning, Jenny.
Good morning. Right, item six point six this morning. I'm seeking a vote to approve the appointment of Power Five the Third, zoning hearing board, effective today, um, eleven thirteen twenty five through December thirty first, one twenty.
Answer motion. I'll make the motion. I'll say. I'd like to thank, uh, Hallie, he serves on a lot of boards, he's a township supervisor, he serves on C and Todd with me, and, uh, he's a true asset to the community and the county. Um, so I'm going to thank him for his, his service on multiple boards.
He's currently an alternate on the zoning hearing board, so will be moved into the.
Great, thank you. We're blessed to have individuals like him that want to serve our community. So thank you, and, uh, a motion and a second, all fair side? Aye. Aye. Thank you. Morning, Kim.
Good morning. Item six point eight is a vote to approve a change order number, I'm sorry, six point seven, uh, to approve a change order number eighteen with key structure construction for the order bill, uh, the amount of seventeen thousand, eight hundred, eight dollars, seventy five cents. Uh, this is not a contract, sorry, not an approved budget item, but funds are available. Uh, this is a contract extension, uh, they were delayed for the water meter install, and they, the contract reached the end of its term, and we're extended it fifteen days by their request.
Now, is there a motion? Yeah, I'll make the motion. I'll say. All fair side? Aye.
Item six point eight is to approve change order number nineteen with key struck construction, uh, the amount of one thousand nine hundred forty one dollars and fourteen cents. Uh, that is for a generator rental that they did not, uh, did not account for in their contingency funds, and we have the funds available through other contractors contingencies.
Motion. I'll make the motion. I'll say. All fair side? Aye.
All right. Uh, item six point nine, uh, vote to approve change order number twenty with key struck construction, the amount of thirteen thousand, six hundred and five dollars. Uh, this is essentially a addition on their existing contract to take over responsibilities that Skanska, the original prime, uh, responsibilities that they were doing. Once their contract ran out, Key Struck stepped in and added, uh, administrative roles of handling primes.
And are we giving any of those original funds back?
From Skanska?
Yeah.
Uh, I believe so, yes.
Okay.
We do have other contingencies from other contractors that haven't been used yet, so we'll also be getting a reverse for those.
Yeah.
I wanted to add to this too, Commissioners, um, originally had Skanska continued on with their, um, contract, it would have cost us almost thirty five thousand dollars. So by, by dismissing Skanska and having Key Struck take over those responsibilities, we saved twenty thousand dollars.
Good. Motion to accept. I'll make the motion. I'll say. All fair side? Aye. Thank you, Kim.
I guess that's me.
Yeah, you're one.
Yeah. Uh, action item six point ten, vote to approve the purchase from Huffman's Office Equipment in the amount of fifteen thousand, four hundred fifty two dollars and forty cents for the county building, which will house the coroner, and this is a twenty twenty five approved budgeted item. Um, as you know, this was originally submitted as sixty three thousand dollars, and we, uh, poured it apart, thank goodness, um, coroner Kiesling was very helpful in trying to get that cost down, he did a lot of work, um, eliminated a lot of the things that were in that original bid, so he, he really helped drive this new figure.
Yeah, that original bid was how much?
Sixty three thousand.
Good. Motion to accept. I'll make the motion. I'll say. Fair side? Aye. Thank you, Sharon. Commissioner Thomas.
Um, you know, I'd like to, I'd like to say today because in, in a positive manner, um, you know, I, I'm always the one talking about the, the cost and the money being spent and, and maybe it's boring for a lot of people to hear me. But, uh, I'd like to say today, you know, when you look at some of these things here and although we do have some, um, some change orders, the change orders were done properly. They weren't, the work wasn't done and then asked for the money later. So this, this is a positive improvement within county government. Uh, when you look at the, the final vote of Huffman's Office Equipment and, you know, it, it changed the vendor, it changed the volume. I think we started originally at, at some furniture for the coroner's office in the a hundred twenty, hundred and forty thousand dollar range and we've worked this number way, way, way down, um, down to us to split up a little bit, we're at the sixty thousand and now down to thirteen or fifteen thousand. You know, this is, this is efforts of, uh, our new team. And I appreciate, you know, we, we've, we've had to make hard decisions as commissioners and, and it's tough when you affect people and their home lives and everything by a change at, at our level. But I truly believe that if we would not have made the hard decisions of these changes and have the new people in place that are making hard decisions and working with vendors, working with staff, working with elected officials, uh, these, these cost savings would not have happened. We, we would have spent more as a county, which was the typical way of doing business. So I am so excited to sit here and be able to approve change order. I don't like change orders at all, but, uh, I'm much happier to approve a change order that happened properly. And, and I'm very excited to see a bunch of different votes today that were cost reductions. Excited to see, um, you know, they say if you take it out of the hands of government and give it to somebody else, it seems to make money. So although the, the farm is still in the hands of the government, we have a team of outside farmers that are running that for us. It's no longer run by the county and ironically, it's, it's made money. They've sold old equipment that they didn't need and then able to purchase new equipment that they do need, uh, without a cost to the taxpayers. This is what we should be doing, we're going in the right direction. I know we still have challenges with the twenty twenty-six budget, we'll work through them. You know, it might take us twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight till we really have things completely under control. But it's, it's days like today that I look at and say, we're doing the right things, we're moving in the right directions. Maybe to a lot of people it's too fast, maybe to a lot of people it's the wrong decisions, but it's getting the right results. So I'm, I'm very excited to, to be part of that and very excited to have the new people that we have surrounding us doing the jobs that they're doing. So I want to just thank everybody.
And you, and you look at, you know, we went from initially a hundred and some thousand down to sixty-three, down to fifteen. Benefit package in Lycoming County for employees were twenty-five thousand. So you look at how many benefit packages alone, we saved one decision. So people say, well, what do you, what do you squab them or stuff, stuff like this? We're not squabbing, we're reducing costs that aren't necessary when you have stuff of storage or stuff that you get all over the cost. I'd like to thank, uh, County Montgomery for a great veterans parade on, uh, Saturday. We were over there attending it and, and they did a fantastic job, uh, Veterans Committee, attended the veteran's service, I think it's been fifteen years now, and, uh, in Torso, Carol Savoy, the committee down there, fantastic job they do to honor the veterans. Fantastic, uh, listening to the third graders sing, our veterans. So I want to thank them and, and we attended a, uh, groundbreaking for, uh, down in Hughesville, the school for the, for the trades. So they expand their, their school to put more kids into trades, uh, out of high school or, or into college for trades. So that, that's gonna have a direct influence on our workforce going forward as, as they train those kids. Couple of things that happened this week that highlights for the county.
We, uh, you know, we see every year, as Forrest said, every year's an election year and we always tell everyone to get out to vote. We get excited for the votes when it's a president or a senator or governor. Even though we, we realize mathematically, you know, is our one little vote going to sway who wins the presidency? We, we really, nah, but we kind of do it out of our civic duty and because, you know, people, you know, lost their lives to give us this right. So that's, that's kind of why we do it. But we, we've, we've said this before and people talk all the time on a local level, uh, you can really make a difference individually and your vote can really make a difference. And, you know, the fact that there is a tie for, uh, city council in Williamsport, I, I think the number's twenty-four hundred and fifteen each. Um, and next, I think it's next Friday, there'll be a drawing and they'll see who won. But for those, so there's two thousand four hundred and fifteen people after next Friday who will know that their vote mattered that much, that if any one of those people didn't vote, that it would, that the result would be different. And, you know, so that, their little vote changed history in Williamsport. And it is their reminder of how important it is. And again, we get excited for president, we get excited for governor, the ones, we see all the ads on TV, but the ones way down the ballot, the ones in your backyard are the ones that you can really make a difference and, and getting to the polls is, is so important. And, you know, we do see them like Forrest said, there'll be ties in places where there's write-in votes and it'll be tie one-one or, you know, you get in, in, out in townships where it's tied, you know, twenty-three to twenty-three. The fact that it's twenty-four hundred, twenty-four hundred, it, it just, it shows how important it is. So, uh, it's just that little reminder to everyone, if the people say, well, what's it matter if I don't go out and vote? Uh, this is a big, in the city Williamsport, you'll see that it mattered a lot and, and, um, and we'll see the results next week. But that's our little civic lesson for the day.
And, uh, we're glad that the federal government, the state government has a budget now. Um, it's ironic, they're on the same day. Um, but we're glad that the monies will be flowing back through to the food banks and to the schools, to the programs that, um, need it. And, um, hopefully next year they can get done on time. Yeah, and we, and we pray that they don't do this again in January on a federal level because this resolution's only through January thirtieth. So, uh, they should pass legislation that they don't have any shutdowns at all. Stay there and figure it out. Okay. Other comment? Of the audience, Dana Lyon.
I do. Mr. Thomas Adams, thirty-six, fourteen. Good morning, Lycoming County. Thank you for your dedication and involvement to the recognition of our war veterans and service members or our armed services. We have too many people in our nation who have been spoiled by prosperity, miseducation and a lack of understanding of citizenship based on biblical precepts. The influx of illegal immigrants add to these numbers exponentially with our universities and sanctuaries being used as cover for people who are only here for financial gain without a care what it takes for a nation to be blessed by God to have such prosperity when people, legal or illegal, have no regard for truth, justice, righteousness and general welfare for all and have no desire for assimilating into the traditional American culture. They will have no, no for our military veterans and because of multiculturalism and the rejection of the melting pot model of American ideology, these people become bastions for division. United we stand, divided we fall. For the love of money is the root of all evil. Thank you for your work and dedication to Lycoming County. May God bless America and may God bless Lycoming County. And that's it.
Thank you. Uh, one additional highlight was we met yesterday with the golf course and they continue to do very well. Uh, they will be here in December to present a check back to the county, um, for a good amount of money. And so we'll do that presentation sometime in December. We want to thank the management company over there that's doing a great job with the golf course and, uh, very thankful that it's been turned around. Every year they come back and give us good news. Last couple of years they've come back with checks, this year it'll be a bigger check. We'll do that presentation in December.
I, I would thank the previous board of commissioners for making that, that move, you know, for so many years, that golf course costs county taxpayers a ton of money. And, you know, one of the things that I always looked at when, when I was at Lowell Stock Township is, you know, we had, we had a swimming pool, one of the few townships left with a swimming pool. Swimming pools don't make money. We turned ours around to make money because statement I made there and it would be the same as the golf course, is not everybody uses that pool, so not everybody should have to pay for that pool. Not everybody uses the golf course, not everybody should pay for that golf course. So what a, what a great decisions they made and I hate to say it again, but, you know, take it out of the hands of government and you can make money. So we took something that lost hundreds of thousand dollars a year to something that's now producing hundreds of thousand dollars a year, uh, in a very short time because it went private. So, uh, these are the things that, you know, again, the tough decisions that we'll make in the years ahead, that makes those changes to put government out of private business and private business operating within our county to, to produce an income. Uh, it's great that we have, have a, a, a team between us and private to continue to operate that golf course. So what, what an excellent decision was made a few years back, um, we all profit from today.
Okay. Well, we've completed our agenda, so we'll be adjourned till, uh, next week. Uh, Thursday, November twentieth will be, uh, a, uh, commissioners meeting, then we'll have a special, um, commissioners meeting on Tuesday, November twenty-fifth. For just the budget alone, but you'll be introduced on that date, Tuesday, November twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five at ten AM. And then there will be no meeting two days later on Thanksgiving. So, uh, see everybody next Thursday, November twentieth, ten AM in the speed room. Thank you. Thank you.